All right. Hello. Hello, everyone out there on Facebook. This is Tommy Valentine. I am the Executive Director of Historic Athens, and we really appreciate you joining us today for this special Facebook Live broadcast. This is part seven in our 55-part series, This Moment in History: Athens During COVID-19. We really appreciate all of you that are tuning in. I see a lot of you joining us. Just to let you know, and we'll remind you of this a little later in the episode, this is not just a broadcast that you can watch, it's also a broadcast that you can participate in. If you have any questions for our guests today or any comments, just put them right in the comment section below, and we can actually share them on screen, and you can become part of this conversation and this historic narrative. If this is the first time you've tuned into one of these episodes, we just want you to know that we're trying to accomplish two things here. One is, we're very privileged to have Athens Clark County Commissioner Melissa Link with us today, and so we're going to certainly try to get some contemporary information out to you. But also, this is about producing a historic document that we can contribute, the audio and visual files of two local libraries and research institutions, so that hopefully future generations can look back at this moment and realize what Athens was like during this time. So if you have any questions that hit either of those sweet spots, please let us know. We do want to thank the Delamater family for sponsoring this week's broadcast. Each week for 11 weeks, we have different sponsors that are making this program possible, and we really do appreciate that support. So thanks, Dan and Corey, for making this possible. So aside from that, we really appreciate you all tuning in. We're going to go ahead and bring in the Commissioner at this time. So let's just bring her on with us.
Hi.
Hi, Melissa. How are you?
I'm good. I'm hanging in there.
All right. Well, you know, I'm so used to seeing what everyone's bookshelves look like. We keep finding ourselves in different people's living rooms. But today, we had a different kind of thing. So you're out on your front porch today, is that right?
I'm out on my front porch. My husband is a school teacher. He teaches ninth and 10th grade English. So we live in a tiny little mill house, and he's in the next room screaming at high school kids all day. So I do most of my workout on the porch. You know, thankfully, the weather's been gorgeous, and it's very quiet out here, and flowers are blooming.
Well, I can relate. You know, Laura, my wife, is a second-grade teacher, and so we have had to try to figure out, you know, everyone's trying to figure out different things right now. We're fortunate enough to both still be pulling paychecks, but you know, we're trying to figure out how to run a nonprofit and a second-grade classroom live in the same house, and it's tricky.
Yeah, my house is kind of a wreck.
Yeah, this is the most organized part of my house. That's why we're doing it from here. These bookshelves, which are completely out of order. So Commissioner Link, Melissa, you know, you're well-known to a lot of people in Athens, but I imagine there are going to be some people tuning in either now or at some other time that may not know you well. And so I wanted to start out the broadcast by helping our audience get to know you. Can you tell us a little bit first about, you know, your work in this community and how you found yourself in the role that you're in today?
Um, well, I am currently the Commissioner for District Three. I'm in just over a year into my second term, so I've been on the commission over five years now. I never really, like, imagined myself getting into politics. My background is in art and in writing. I was real involved in the Athens music and art scene in the 90s. I wrote for Flagpole. I came to Athens as a graduate student in art history. I did a lot of community arts organizing. And I guess through my awareness that I came to through my role at Flagpole, I got more and more involved in the community and started following local politics more and got kind of involved in neighborhood activism and environmental activism. I mean, I've kind of always been an environmentalist. And currently, for the past 13 years or so, my day job is running an environmental ethics journal out of the philosophy department at UGA. So I just kind of fell into local activism, you know, seven or eight years ago and ended up where I am.
And so you said you're in the, you said the first year of your second term or second year of your second term?
I'm in the second year of my second term.
So, so as a county commissioner, you know, I know that that's a job that's become very familiar to you, but there may be people in the audience that are still trying to understand what exactly a county commissioner does. Can you talk a little bit about that job?
Well, I mean, we are your local legislative body. There's 10 commissioners. We each represent one-tenth of Athens Clark County. And we vote on ordinances that come up. Typically, they come up through staff or through committees, through an agenda that the mayor sets. And we're basically like, you know, this teeny-tiny mini version of Congress on a local level. So we have less legislative power than Congress might have.
What led you to want to do that job?
Um, I think quite a few years ago, I think I began to feel that people in my community were not necessarily being represented in local government. People from the arts community, I definitely felt like people from our more working-class community were not being represented. The environmental community, you know, I think that's what I felt. I felt that, you know, I needed a voice, and folks in my community needed a voice.
And for the, for folks that know you well and for folks that are just getting to know you, what are, what are some of the issues that you are most passionate about?
Well, I am very passionate about preservation and environmentalism. And I really deeply feel that the two are extricably linked. In preserving our built environment, we preserve our natural environment. So those are two of my top issues. I'm very, as far as economics goes, I'm very socially focused. You know, I'm a big proponent of economic equality, which is a huge issue. Even this current crisis has revealed that to be even more so. You know, I'm a huge proponent of working-class folks getting their fair share, you know, fair wages, equal access to healthcare, all of those kind of things.
Absolutely. So one of the questions that I'd like to start with is, when we're talking about COVID-19 in Athens, one of the, I guess one of the things that I find most interesting is the way that it came on different people's radar. You know, a lot of folks talk about how it really started hitting home when certain things got canceled. I mean, you know, so whether it was Ath Fest or South by Southwest or earlier than that, a lot, you know, right around the time of UGA and Clark County Spring Break, it became real for a lot of people. But for folks that are in civil service who had their ears up, it might have popped up sooner on your radar. How did this kind of unfold for you? What was that timeline like?
Well, I think I, I think it really first started being real to me when I noticed that, you know, China had canceled their New Year's celebrations. And then I started seeing things that were happening on the West Coast. I have my favorite cousin, who was my roommate here in Athens for a couple of years while she was in grad school. She lives out in Palo Alto while her husband's in grad school at Stanford. And when I heard that Stanford was canceled classes, I was like, you know, this is a big deal, and this is coming our way. My husband's been following it very closely, and he was ahead of the game. You know, over a week before we issued our lockdown orders in Athens, he had stocked up, you know, on groceries and toilet paper and all that stuff for us. He's like, you know, we're going to be shut down. And, you know, that's when I realized, yeah, we are. And when South by Southwest got canceled, that was like the nail in the coffin for me. I realized right then and there that, yeah, this is coming our way, and it's a big deal.
So that feeling that the wave was coming, I mean, that was a crushing feeling for so many people. But for folks who have a civil service job, or I'm sorry, for folks who are, you know, like you, who are in elected office, it's not just the existential terror. You also had to do stuff. You had to, you know, I mean, there were things to get past. There were considerations to be made. How did you juggle those two competing feelings?
Well, I mean, we live in a democracy, thankfully, which means we have to communicate to the people, you know, what is coming and what we need to do. And that was difficult. We knew that there would be some pushback, and it would be a shock, and there would be folks that weren't as informed. And so we kind of did have this two-phase lockdown, you know, and the initial, the initial shelter-in-place, you know, there was a lot of negotiating back and forth. And, you know, we ended up passing a voluntary one, and then two days later, passing a mandatory one. Our real push was, we had to get those bars closed by St. Patrick's Day. We really dodged a bullet here in Athens in that, you know, the COVID crisis came to Georgia while UGA was on spring break. Those 36,000 students weren't in town. They weren't out at the bars while, you know, plenty, there weren't classes being held. I really believe that, you know, we really lucked out there, and thankfully, UGA had it together to cancel classes before the students came back. You know, plenty of them came back to Athens. Their stuff was all here. But we were in a real scramble to make sure that downtown was not packed on St. Patrick's Day. And we were able to do that. We initially issued a prohibition on gatherings of more than 10. And the initial proposal was prohibition on gatherings of more than 50. And thankfully, that day, even the CDC had announced, I mean, like, within an hour of our meeting, the CDC had announced that they recommend no more than 10. And we were able to finagle that behind the rail. And then a couple of days later, we made it mandatory. And I think that, you know, that initial order and part of that initial voluntary order, we had some educating to do. I chair the Board of Health, which is typically kind of a, you know, rubber-stamp committee that basically just deals with budgetary issues and minor recommendations. But, you know, the next day, I called the board, the local health department, and I was like, we need some educational materials. We need to figure out how we're going to get word about this out to our public. You know, what are the protocols in restaurants? What are the protocols on our factory floors and our poultry plants? You know, just that, how are we going to keep functioning as a society? And what absolutely does need to be shut down? And how are we going to communicate this to people? There were certain aspects of the community that didn't feel like it was urgent. You know, this pandemic kind of started out as kind of an upper-middle-class, a disease of the upper-middle class. It was people who were well-traveled and well-to-do that were initially impacted. And as we see now, it's our minority communities, people of color, our lower-income communities that are being devastated by it, primarily because they don't have access to decent healthcare. And I saw that, you know, I was like, you know, the folks in our lower-income community aren't getting this right now. And this is conversations I was having with other commissioners, you know, they don't see this as important. They see their jobs as being taken away. But we had to communicate the seriousness of it. And, you know, I feel like we did a pretty good job of that. And our leaders in those communities did an excellent job of reaching out to folks on the ground. I mean, it's, the pain is excruciating. But, you know, it's worse when you see a community like Albany, Georgia, which my mother-in-law lives just a couple of counties over from there, and that community is devastated. It's worse when you hear about what's happening in New York. My family's from New York. My mom grew up in Brooklyn. I have a cousin in her 30s who did come down with COVID. Thankfully, she got through it pretty quickly. I have aunts and uncles in their 60s and 70s in Brooklyn in the Bronx, really terrified for them. Thankfully, they're in a situation where they're able to socially isolate themselves and order food. And so much of our working-class community, so much of our lower-income communities, they have to go out. They have to work. They're the ones who are stocking the shelves and cutting the meat and serving the food.
I want to jump in here real quick. First of all, as we've mentioned, you can comment below. If you want to say anything, we can share it on screen. Jeremy Field just jumped in to say that he appreciates you and the ACC Commission for being proactive in this time. And so Jeremy, thank you for sharing that feedback. And if you have other comments or questions, please jump in below to share that. But Melissa, you know, so Jeremy's comment here, I'll bring it back up, talked about being proactive. And I know that one phrase, one theme that has occurred throughout this conversation has been the idea of the working class. So...
My dog. Leia, get back here. Leia. Sorry. Leia. Leia, now. Hold on. Leia. No, 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 no. Leia.
Real time. While we were waiting for Melissa to rejoin us and hopefully her dog to rejoin her, we just want to say that today's broadcast, for the remainder of this broadcast, you can anytime share comments and questions. Let's make sure our dog's safe and sound. Melissa, were you able to...
Across the street, the little girls were in their front yard. She is not handling this social distancing thing very well at all. It's really, really tough for a puppy who does not understand. Oh, yeah. Sorry about that.
So, no, that's okay. Jennifer Lewis just said, "This is all of us trying to welcome home uncooperative coworkers." Yes, I have two dogs. One's a very loud German Shepherd, and I'm shocked he hasn't taken over one of these broadcasts yet. It's only a matter of time. So Melissa, going back to Jeremy's question here about being commissioned, and Jeremy also just shared, "The challenges of working and playing at home." So yes, there's certainly that. But I want to go back to your description of the initial wave of passing the shelter-in-place restrictions. I know that you've mentioned working class a lot on this, on this interview. What were, what was the process of trying to protect the working class like during those initial restrictions? And how was that weighing on you while you were in those initial negotiations?
Well, I mean, once we had passed the mandatory shelter-in-place and the mandatory social distancing guidelines, you know, the challenge was how do we assure that they're being followed, especially behind closed doors? You know, and my big concerns were our factories, our call centers. And we were getting calls right away from folks who worked in those places or who had friends or family who worked in them. You know, one of my first calls was to the UFCW, the United Food and Commercial Workers. I wanted to make sure that proper protocols. And thankfully, we have a unionized plant here. You know, we're seeing now that these massive outbreaks across the country are taking out entire plants. The UFCW was on it right away, and they got Pilgrim's Pride and other plants that are unionized to agree to proper protocols on the outset. And from what I understand, they're, you know, checking people's temperatures as they show up to work. They've provided them with proper protective gear. They've set up tents for break rooms so people are able to distance. They're, you know, they've set up screens. From what I understand, they're doing the right thing, and they haven't had the outbreaks that are popping up in other places. I believe there's at least one other plant in Georgia that's had a big outbreak. So, I mean, that was a big concern. You know, there's call centers. And, you know, we, the question was, how do, how do we enforce these things? And initially, you know, we didn't want a police state. And Athens Clark County Police did not want that burden. I mean, they didn't want to put themselves in danger. You know, we need our police force to stay healthy for real emergencies and real safety issues. From what I understand, recently, they are starting to issue citations from, you know, people who are repeatedly hosting gatherings. But, you know, those were some of the big concerns, you know, there's places behind closed doors where there are large gatherings. You know, we need to make sure that either they're shut down or they're reduced capacity or, you know, or they have the proper protective gear and protocols in place.
Do you, do you think that this moment had, or what has this moment revealed to you about class in Athens? Or about those kind of lines?
I mean, I think it's made us more aware, I hope it's made us more aware, that we do live different lives. And, you know, people like me are exceptionally privileged. I mean, yes, I'm still able to work both my jobs from home and draw both my paychecks. My husband is a school teacher. He's still working from home. You know, we need to, different people are going to be differently financially impacted by this. You know, yet we're all going to get the same $1,200 check, or at least anybody who makes under that $75,000, which I don't know very many people who make more than that, quite frankly. You know, I feel like there are some people that are sacrificing way, way more. There's people out there who are sacrificing their lives working on the front lines of hospitals. And there are those who are sacrificing their livelihoods in that their jobs are gone. And there are those who are continuing to sacrifice their lives, working, you know, in meatpacking plants and stocking grocery store shelves. And, but those of us who, I mean, there are plenty of folks who we aren't sacrificing. We're at home in our comfortable homes with our big backyards and our internet. And I think we need to be prepared to sacrifice, you know, whether it's now or in the aftermath. I mean, I'm not going anywhere, but I try wherever I can to donate to, I mean, you know, GoFundMe pages and local charities. And, you know, every day, something pops up, and I'm like, okay, I'm going to throw $30 that way and $50 that way. You know, we're going, as Americans, we're very seldom asked to sacrifice. You know, the great tragedies of recent years have not been like, had widespread impact. But I think it's a time for us to recognize that, in order to move forward, we're going to need to sacrifice.
So speaking of making those sacrifices, another issue you mentioned earlier that's important to you is sustainability. Last Wednesday's episode, we had Dan Geller on of KinderCorps, who's also someone that thinks a lot about sustainability. We had a conversation there. I'd like to have that conversation with you. You're someone who advocates for and believes in sustainability, being environmentally responsible. You've mentioned your husband, Charles. When I used to work with him years and years ago, the first time I ever heard about you was about rain barrels in the backyard. I mean, I know that you're someone who cares a lot about environmental sustainability. What do you think about environmental sustainability in this context? I mean, have you noticed any effects on that?
Well, I believe that Mother Earth, in a lot of ways, has certainly appreciated this break. I have never known the sky to be so blue or the stars to be so bright. You know, we know that pollution levels have plummeted. As a matter of fact, you know, the oil prices have dropped, gone negative, because we're not using oil. You know, we're not using fossil fuels. We're not spewing that poison into the air. And I think that's another great lesson we can learn, is that we can cut back on these things. You know, we don't necessarily need to take all those trips. We don't necessarily have to make that drive to the office every day. You know, we can learn to rethink the way this world works for the betterment of the world, for the betterment of the planet, for the sustainability of the climate. And, you know, I do think that, you know, this is showing us a glimmer of what the future could hold.
So I guess where I want to transition to is another issue that I know is important to you. So I know that you've been one of the most vocal commissioners on race and discrimination. You know, how do you feel that, we've talked about how this is playing out in different communities across class. Do you see, do you see race or discrimination as an issue during times like these?
Well, I mean, I think the root of it all comes, is much, much deeper in our basic inequality that's racial and economic. I mean, the folks that are in the lower stratus of the economic ladder are the ones who are most at risk of dying in this pandemic. And yeah, disproportionately, they tend to be people of color because of longstanding, you know, racial inequality and discrimination and segregation. And that stretches back hundreds and hundreds of years. And, you know, I think that, you know, we were, the structure of our society has set that up for people of color and our minority communities to be more devastatingly impacted by any crisis, quite frankly.
And then to the, you mentioned your, you know, your entryway into this community was through the arts and music scene. You know, if somebody's looking back at this decades from now, what has the effect been like in your eyes of this crisis on that arts and music scene?
Well, I can't imagine what it would be like to be particularly a performing artist at this time. I mean, it's, it's not just a job or a hobby to an artist. It's who they are. It's so much of their identity, and that identity is wrapped up in performing for an audience. And that's impossible these days. There's a lot of online performances going on. But, you know, I know that performers crave that audience. They crave that applause. They crave those bright lights. And they crave that interaction. I mean, music is so much an interactive art. You have to be in the same room with someone jamming in order to create, you know, the true masterpieces. It's interesting to see some of the online broadcasts of these artists, you know, who are trapped inside and the things that come out, you know, of them by themselves. It's beautiful and sad and uplifting. I mean, yeah, I think, I truly believe that, you know, art gets overlooked as the most telling historical document. And, you know, 100, 200 years from now, when historians are going through the art of this period, the music of this period, I think that those will have some of the most honest stories to tell.
Yeah. So before we went on air, we were talking a little bit about how this has affected you. And one of the things you talked about is that today, you find yourself in a very philosophical headspace. Do you want to explore that with us at all? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I work for a philosophy journal, an environmental philosophy journal, so I'm kind of always in that headspace. But, I mean, yeah, I've had, you know, a series of existential crises throughout the past few weeks.
Sure.
You know, and I'm always kind of in that space, you know, being an environmentalist and facing climate change and being a democratic socialist and facing like mass economic inequality. You know, I'm always thinking about those things in my head, and I'm the type of person who always looks at big picture. And I always tend to project into the future and look back, you know, what will this mean five years, 10 years, 100 years from now? So, yeah, I mean, I, I do look at, I mean, I look at this as a great change, a portal. Somebody wrote an article, "It's a portal. The pandemic is a portal." And, you know, it's, it's like we're on the edge of a cliff. And, you know, sooner or later, we're going to fall over. Are we going to fall into the abyss or are we going to fly? And I think it's up to us to... And I think it's up to us to make the changes in our society, to, to rise above not just this, but everything that brought us here. The, the cracks in our society, the crevices and the crevasses in our society that have brought us here. And, and try to rebuild something new. You know, I think that there, it's, it's the responsibility of leaders to face the facts and possibly admit that they've been wrong, that worldviews have been wrong. And we need to change the way our society is structured and who it works for. And, and understand that sacrifices are gonna have to be made, that there are too many people who have made ultimate sacrifices as a practice of their lives, that we, we really need to restructure the way this world works and the way our American society works.
Yeah. I, um, you know, you just reminded me of something that I, how, I, I feel, I wish I had it handy. It's on one of these bookshelves, but, uh, so, you know, I was at Cedar Shoals High School when 9/11 happened. And I was the editor of Blueprints at the time. And I remember we did this really, i- i- in hindsight, very jingoistic issue, you know, with like everyone wearing like I Love New York shirts and American flags waving and all this stuff. And, um, you know, that was very much the attitude at the time. But those were, those were the images, like when I think back at that era, I think of those images and of the towers and, and, and especially this, what it was like during those first few weeks. As someone who thinks artistically, what are some of the images that you think are gonna last from this crisis? What, what, to you, what, what does this crisis look like?
A lot of little boxes on a screen. I don't know if you saw the Saturday Night Live episode they've done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, I thought that was a kind of interesting example of how we adapt, how, how art adapts. You know, I think we're learning to compartmentalize our creativity. You know, say, say big things in very small spaces. I also followed the recreations that people did of Renaissance paintings in their homes. And I actually did one. You know, I, I think it's very interesting how we, um, it's an era of adaption. You know, we're learning to adapt the world that we knew into this, this new world. And I think that's a good thing. You know, it's time for change and, and maybe what we do get out of all of this is, is, um, learning to accept transformation.
Melissa, stay with me one second. We're gonna just briefly, uh, take this opportunity to thank our sponsors. Uh, so I'm just gonna show you this and then we'll be back with Melissa here one moment. So, uh, we do want to just thank everyone who's tuning in, uh, because you're making this possible just by being part of it. I also do want to say that we really appreciate our sponsors. So, uh, these are our annual sponsors that celebrate, uh, and conserve Athens with us. So you can see all the names on the screen here. Let me just show that. So, we appreciate all of these folks for helping make Athens possible and for helping us preserve the cultural heritage of Athens. We also want to mention though, that in addition to our sponsors, which you can become a sponsor if you want to by visiting historicathens.com, we also appreciate our donors and members. You can become a member, an annual member for as little as $5 a month, um, by visiting historicathens.com. And this is where I want to emphasize, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, just like everyone else. You know, like every other nonprofit, we're trying to navigate this moment, both in terms of programming, but also in terms of surviving. And so, if you want to contribute to our mission and to programs like these, uh, please visit historicathens.com. Uh, and we can, uh, bring you into the fold as a member. So, thank you there. And, uh, we're gonna get switched back over to Melissa. But we do appreciate the chance to thank our sponsors, including the Delmater family who made this week possible. So, all right. So Melissa, welcome back. So, uh, I'm gonna bring this up. Deborah just shared this. Deborah Gonzalez just shared, uh, art is a way of documenting history. The artists are so important during this time. And you said something really fascinating earlier, Melissa, you said that in many ways you think that art and music and, and so on can be some of the most important historical narratives. Can you, can you expound on that a bit?
Well, I mean, I studied Renaissance art. That was my focus, which some people are surprised at. But, and I grew up, I, I grew up Catholic. I went to Catholic school for eight years. You know, had religion class every day and Mass every Friday and on Sunday. But honestly, I learned more about the Catholic faith and the lives of the saints and all that stuff from studying the art. And from his, and, and about history of that era, from studying the art. Because it not only is a document of the history, but it gives you an insight into a personality, into little snapshots of, of life. You know, the personality of the artist and what was going on in their life that influenced this image. Um, and I think that is the more telling document than, you know, just the facts and figures, dates and places that you learn in history class.
All right. So what I'd like to do is transition into some questions we've been asking each of our guests. So the first one's a bit of a light question, uh, but I've been asking each of our guests, what are the things that they miss doing? Uh, you know, at least as long as shelter in place is a thing, voluntarily or not. There's, there's certain places we can't go, certain businesses we can't visit, certain meals we can't have, habits we can't, uh, play out. Is there anything like that here in Athens that comes to mind for you?
I mean, the funny thing is, in a lot of ways, being forced to stay at home has brought me back to things that I miss doing. You know, gardening. I, I hadn't had a garden in three years. Cooking, I hadn't really, I'm, I'm, I'm a good cook. I'm a really good cook and I loved to cook, especially with fresh local food. And I'm, I'm back to that. You know, once I got into politics, my evenings were occupied. You know, evenings were when I did my gardening and when I, you know, when I cooked, I was really proud of like, you know, pretty much feeding my household almost year round with food from my garden. I joined a CSA. My, my next door neighbor happens to have a family farm, so I have access to fresh vegetables. I planted my own garden. So in a lot of ways, it's brought me back to myself and back to, um, things that, that I had kind of put to the side. But the things that I miss are, are people. And it's not just people I know, but strangers. Like usually, this time of year, I'd be out knocking on doors, you know, for candidates. And, and I, I miss not being able to do that, those, and, and the interactions on the bus. You know, just conversations with strangers that I would never, whose paths I'd never cross otherwise. And, and, you know, insights into the lives of folks completely unlike me. I miss that. I miss those opportunities. I mean, I, I live in a tight knit neighborhood. Um, and so, you know, I'm, I have social interactions. We have plenty of conversations with my neighbors from driveways and front porches. But it's those interactions with, with strangers that, that I do miss.
Yeah. Earlier, you mentioned that preservation is something that's important to you. Uh, obviously, that's a big part of what we do. One other question I've been asking is about your, you know, each guest's favorite or most treasured historic sites. You know, in the preservation community, one of the discussions that I keep hearing is that when you come out of a crisis like this, or especially if you're seeking to or coming out of a recession, uh, sometimes you see a lot of unrestricted commercial development, you know, building just to build or, or tearing down just to do something new. And so you see a lot of historic sites that previously would have been thought to be safe, suddenly become endangered overnight. Do you have any thoughts on that or historic sites that you hope that we're protecting?
Yeah, I do have a lot of thoughts on that and I, I, I fear disaster capitalism coming to happen. You know, we've seen it happen in New Orleans, um, after Katrina and in parts of New York after 9/11. And I fear that, you know, it's gonna happen all over the country in the wake of this pandemic. You know, where those who do have the capital are gonna target, you know, places that are in distress, property owners, business owners that are in distress and are having a hard time recovering. They'll find it easier to just sell out and move on to take whatever lowball offer falls in front of them. And, um, yeah, I do fear we're gonna lose a lot. We're gonna lose local businesses. We're gonna lose important buildings. We're gonna lose entire communities in some cases. I fear for West Downtown. I've been fearing for West Downtown for a long time and Hot Corner. I know that designs are already on that part of our community. And unless we pass that, that West Downtown Hot Corner Historic District, you know, it, I, I'd give it five years before entire blocks are transformed into something we don't even recognize. So, yeah, I, I think it's, you know, in the wake of this pandemic, it's all the more reason to fight to preserve that part of our community.
You know, we do hope that decades from now, people are looking at this interview. What are some historic sites around Athens that you hope they're still able to visit? What are some of your favorites from around our community?
Our neighborhoods, our, 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 our small working class neighborhoods. I really think that so much of, of what made Athens what it is are, are little historic neighborhoods, you know, with, with modest homes. You know, they kind of fostered that creative community that put us on the map. And, you know, some of them we have got historic protections for, but a lot of them we don't. And I think that's somewhere we're gonna need to turn our attention towards. Historic homes can maintain, you know, and continue to be places where middle class and working class folks can live.
Speaking of historic homes, I, I live in Newtown and I had to mute briefly there because the train was going by. So, uh, you know, where did you develop that ethic of, of loving historic things? And, you know, I know that you're one of our most passionate commissioners, uh, on historic assets, on the value of history. Where did that come into play?
I grew up in the suburbs of DC in a 1970s aluminum sided house. But my grandmother lived in a three story brownstone in Brooklyn. And, you know, she raised my mom and her seven brothers and sisters in that house. And they never had the money to like keep up with the Joneses. They, they never redid it through the mid-century. And so the house still had its parquet floors and its stained glass partitions and its carved renewal posts. It was a product of probably Italian immigrant craftsmanship from around 1900. And, you know, it had the roundels in the ceiling and, um, so that was always something that was just familiar to me. That was, that was one of the places where I felt most comfortable. In many ways, I felt.
Let's see here. So Melissa, very present to me. I don't know if that's happening out there too. I saw a comment by Gary that I look forward to bringing up on screen here in a moment. Let's give her a second to try to reset. Out and everyone stay with us, uh, just one moment while I go ahead and try to see if I can get, uh, Melissa back here. So I will say, I, I want to go ahead and while I'm waiting for Melissa to jump back in, I'm gonna go ahead and bring up Gary's comment. So Gary and Joan Birch, uh, just like the Delmater family, uh, are helping sponsor this week. Gary Birch and Joan Birch were, uh, our sponsors last week. So big thanks to Gary. And while we wait for Melissa to jump in, uh, you can see Gary's full question and full comment in the comment section below. But Gary wrote, uh, uh, thank you to Melissa and her fellow commissioners for their extraordinary service and leadership in the community. For those of you that don't know, Gary was with SPIA for a long time. And he wrote, although I've been more focused on international affairs in the past, I'm now focused and inspired by you and the community due to the terrific work being done here. Thanks. So, uh, I'm, I'm sure that lots of us feel like Gary in that increasingly we are paying attention to all things local. These are things that, it's definitely a time that feels local. I see that Melissa's jumping back in with us. Let's see here. Melissa, one second. We'll bring you back on screen.
Sorry about that. My computer was out of juice. I didn't realize.
That's okay.
But I'm back. Now I'm inside.
Now you're inside. Change of scenery. So, uh, we were just sharing, uh, Gary's comment about switching our focus locally. So, uh, Gary and Joan Birch were our sponsors last week. We really love the Birch's, um, also big supporters of preservation. And, uh, Melissa, uh, Gary's full, uh, comment read, uh, thank you, Melissa, and your fellow ACC commissioners for your extraordinary service and leadership in our community. Although I've been more focused on international affairs in the past, I'm now focused and inspired by you and our community due to the terrific work being done here. Thanks. So there, you know, there's an adage in, in politics that, uh, all, was it all government is local, you know, or all politics is local. You know, you talked about it's time for changes. Do you think moments like this increase awareness of our local government and the role that they play in our lives?
Oh, certainly. Definitely. Yeah, I mean, definitely moment of, in moments of crisis, it's your local government that's at the front lines. And, you know, in our situation, even more so because we had a state government and a federal government that was so unresponsive to a crisis that was literally a matter of life and death. You know, and now in the wake of Governor Kemp's announcement yesterday to reopen everything statewide and prohibit local governments from enacting local restrictions, um, we feel that even more acutely. You know, I, we planned to pass a resolution tonight, in, you know, urging Athenians to continue to follow the shelter at home protocols. And there are lots and lots of local businesses who have already announced they're not gonna be reopening for the safety of the community. You know, I really think that history will look back on this moment. And I don't think it'll be kind to get Governor Kemp. I don't think it'll be kind to, to President Trump. I don't think it'll be kind to those who did not take this seriously. And I really believe that they will have blood on their hands.
For viewers that are watching this right now, I know the la- the last 24 hours, the, the news cycle of the last 24 hours might be confusing to some people that are still trying to understand shelter in place or proper social distancing. Can you, uh, explain a little bit about the relationship between our local and state government? How, how yesterday's order might preempt local, uh, restrictions or rules? Can you disentangle that a little bit for us?
Well, the, the state definitely has preemption over local governments on a whole, on, on just about any issue. You know, and by explicitly stating that state, state, um, the state of emergency order or the rescindance of that, it, he explicitly stated that local governments will not be allowed to initiate their own shelter in place orders. They won't be able, they won't be allowed to loosen what he proclaims and they won't be allowed to pass anything stricter.
For folks watching this, what, what guidance do you have for them? What do you hope that our viewers will, will do?
I hope that our viewers will, will pay attention to, um, our local resolutions, our local recommendations. You know, please, I mean, the mayor's been great about, um, putting out videos every couple of days or so. And, you know, following Athens Clark County's website. You know, I hope that folks in Athens will continue to follow our local recommendations.
Okay. And, uh, you know, tomorrow we'll be back with Commissioner, uh, Tim Denson, for those of you that can tune in tomorrow at 1:00. And so, you know, I know we'll continue the discussion about all things local, including hearing more about this resolution. Is there anything more about that resolution or about forthcoming plans or actions that you have that you want to share with us?
I, I haven't even seen the resolution yet. I just got off the phone with Commissioner Edwards about 20 or so minutes before I signed on here. So I haven't seen it yet. I know that, um, they'll be presenting it. I'll probably, it'll probably be in my email box any minute now. But, you know, it is a resolution, um, which means it's not necessarily enforceable, but it is a strong, strong statement, um, you know, to the governor, that, that we believe that, you know, we know what's best. that, that we believe that, you know, we know what's best for our community and we want to urge those in our community can, to continue to follow the protocols that were laid down over a month ago.
Yeah. I, I want to, you know, you brought up Commissioner Edwards. I asked him a question during Friday's interview that I'd like to ask you. You know, on behalf of Historic Athens, recently we've been sharing information. A lot of it gleaned from a 2018 Red and Black article that looked back a hundred years earlier at the 1918 flu in Athens. Uh, but just about the way that Athens handled that 1918 flu. And it was remarkable to see, you know, I think, well, they say that, uh, history doesn't have symmetry, but it rhymes or, you know, his, hi- history doesn't repeat itself. Yeah, it doesn't repeat itself, but it rhymes. Yeah, yeah. And it was interesting to see Athens, even in that moment, be more cautious and careful and proactive than it, their colleagues in counties around them. And you can see in, in reports from the Athens Daily News, uh, more strict quarantine protocols, uh, more strict, uh, mask protocols, uh, even at the time, they, they passed a no spitting in public protocol. Uh, you know, we see that rhyme now in this moment with Athens fighting to, uh, to lead the way and then maintain the way in terms of social restrictions. Even in 1918, the Athens paper was writing that we had a far lower infection and mortality rate than we would have otherwise had we not taken those steps. We see some of that rhyme again now. My question to Commissioner Edwards and now to you is, you know, what's in the water here? What's happening in Athens? You know, uh, why, why do you think this rhyme happened?
Well, I think it has a lot to do with the fact that we are a university town. We have a lot of highly educated people here who understand facts and science and history and, um, you know, and, and communicate that to other people. I, I, I believe that has almost everything to do with it. Um, you know, um, there is something to be said for, for education. Um, and, and for, I mean, we have a, a public health college here. We have, um, a medical school. Um, you know, I, I think that has almost everything to do with it. And we did in 1918 as well.
Yeah. Well, so our, our closing question we've been asking each of our guests as we get to the top of the hour here is, you know, when future generations are looking back at this moment, 50, 60, a hundred years from now, what would you like them to know about Athens?
I want them to know we did the right thing, that, you know, we, we were ahead of the curve and that we saved lives. Um, you know, it's, it's very evident that we have saved lives. You know, we are the 19th most populated county. We're just a few counties over from Atlanta where the outbreak's been devastating. Yet last I looked, we fell to 38 in the number of, of diagnoses. So, um, we're definitely doing something right. Um, and, and I, I know that history will, will say that.
Well, that's good. Thank you for sharing that. All right. Well, uh, thank you also for everyone for sharing their time, for being here with us. Uh, thanks to everyone that, uh, that tuned in. We hope that you'll tune in tomorrow, uh, for, uh, Commissioner Tim Denson's interview. Uh, and we do have 55 of these total. If you want to go back and look at any of the older episodes, just go to our Facebook page, click under videos, um, and you'll be able to access all the past broadcasts. So, um, Commissioner Link, thanks for the work you're doing. Thanks for being here with us. Uh, thank you, everyone else, and we will, uh, check in with you tomorrow at one o'clock. Thanks and be safe.
Thank you. You too. Bye-bye.